Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. It's Thursday, May 22nd. This is Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners. I'm Aaron Mays. I'm the chair this year, and I represent District Three. On my left is Commissioner Bill Rippon, representing District One, and on my right is Commissioner Kevin Cook, representing District Two. Good morning to both of you.
Morning.
Let's go ahead and dive in. A really lengthy agenda today, starting with a presentation on TRIA Health.
Good morning. Angela Lewis, Director of Administrative Services. We have Jim Nguyen with us today, and he will give us our TRIA Health in Shawnee County Annual Report.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you?
Good.
Good to see you all.
Good morning.
As Angela just stated, what I'm going to do today is just kind of run through the annual report for what we were able to achieve through the calendar year of January 1st through December 31st of 2024. As a reminder of who TRIA is, we are an organization that is working with your members in the county that have chronic conditions, taking multiple medications for those conditions, and they are engaging with our clinical pharmacists to help them to better manage those conditions, to help them to achieve the goals that we want them to clinically, number one. But from a county standpoint, we're also looking at those impactables around hard-dollar savings, around unnecessary duplication of therapies that individuals are taking. Number two, compliance, getting individuals who have been diagnosed with diabetes, hypertension, heart disease, and so forth, making sure that the conditions and the medications that are taken are controlling them. Because what we do know is that individuals that are well-controlled just themselves, they have better, more healthier lives. But from a plan sponsor standpoint, the better controlled they are, the less cost they are, both from pharmacy expenditure as well as from a medical expenditure. So I'm going to walk through that to show you what those results have been, both clinically as well as what they've been financially. Do you have any questions for me before we get started?
No.
I'm going to jump through here. We always like to start with what we call patient success stories. This is just to give you an idea of what is that interaction between an individual that engages into our program who is aligned with their own clinical pharmacist, meaning that this is the individual that they're going to have their scheduled appointments with, the member has the ability to text back their clinical pharmacist, they can email them, they can call if they ever have any concerns, any questions, or anything of that nature. So I like to make the analogy that we all have our own primary care physician. When members engage in the TRIA program, they have their primary care pharmacist to help them to better manage it. So this is a patient success story of a current patient in the program that basically was on a drug regimen that just was not effective. This is a patient that had uncontrolled diabetes. At the time, they began consulting with our clinical pharmacist, they had an A1C of 10.3, which is extremely high. Goal is, we want it around seven or lower. But when we were looking at the drug regimen, what we looked at was what was this individual on? And this individual at the time was on Lantus, Isolyn, Ozempic, and Metformin, that combination. But as we got deeper into it and realizing that combination of medications, we should be seeing better clinical results from the A1C, and we're not. What it turned out was, number one issue that we had was the Ozempic. The Ozempic dosage was way too low. The dosage at .25 milligrams is not effective for controlling blood sugars, nor, as we know with Ozempic, you hear the commercials, nor is it effective for helping with weight loss. So we did a complete medication review on this, and what we found out was that our recommendation to the patient, but also back to their prescribing physician, was two things. Number one is we've got to raise that Ozempic dosage. So we made the recommendation to the physician to raise it to one milligram, and the physician agreed with that. But by doing that, we were able to get them off the Lantus. So here we have a drug combination that's not working. We were able to reassess what was going on with this individual. We got them on, we talked with the physician, because we can't change anything. We will not change it. We have to get the approval of the prescribing physicians in order to make those changes, in order for us to document them through the claims as well. So this is one where the individual is also experiencing extremely low readings in their 50s, which is hypoglycemia, which we do know that that can turn into a very serious event that needs immediate medical attention. So here we have an individual that just was not well-controlled, who now is very well-controlled. The physician agreed with that, and the great thing is, they started off at a 10.3, then now are at a 5.8 A1C. So I think this is one of those instances where individuals are going to their physicians, but yet when we go and we don't go back, nobody knows these things until we have some oversight. So this was one that we were able to do, but we did all of this without them having to go back to their doctor. So it saved them out of pocket money, and it saved the plan a specialist cost as well, because we did this all telephonically. Any questions on that one?
No.
This is another one. This is one that's probably extreme in our book, but it is one that we run into. This is a patient that's taking 27 prescription medications a day.
Gee.
Yeah. Takes two over-the-counter, sees five physicians, and has 12 conditions, both chronic and non-chronic conditions. So this is just 27 medications. You're probably going to find something that is not working as well as it should. And this is somebody that was on an estrogen therapy, but they had been on this estrogen therapy for five years and longer. And what we know about these medications is, they work, but there's only a certain duration you want them on, because then becomes, over time, there become some risk factors associated with long-term utilization of these medications. This is also another, an individual that was on an antidepressant medication, which they have dual-acting mechanisms associated with it. It wasn't for depression, it was for the fact that it was helped to treat the hot flashes in that regard. So this is one where we are looking at that, the patient really wasn't having the issues that would warrant them to be continually taking this Estradiol. So we reached out again to the physician to make the recommendation to discontinue that medication. The physician agreed with that, the patient's no longer taking it. But the good thing is, is that the individual's symptoms, once we got them off through our follow-up, they're very well-controlled. So again, if we can get you off a medication, we want to get you off a medication, because if they're not clinically of any value, there's no sense in taking these medications. They all have a side effect, they all have an issue, and the fewer medications we take, the better, as long as the conditions are controlled. Did that make sense? And any questions on that one? So we're going to jump to the engagement portion of this. As I mentioned, we get your pharmacy claims on a monthly basis, and we're mining those claims to identify individuals that are on the plan that have one or more chronic conditions taking four or more prescription medications. So for the county, just from a percentage standpoint, makes up about 35% of your population that meet that criteria. The reason why we have that first subset is because when you look at your medical and RX spend for that 35%, they probably make up well over 70% of your total medical and RX cost to the claim. So we identified, through the course of the year, we had 136 individuals who are currently engaged with their clinical pharmacist in the TRIA program. To give you an idea of what that looks like, you can see down here below, we have identified an additional 331 that we continue to outreach to, to let them know that they have a benefit that's no cost to them. The county pays for that, but also there's an incentive for them to participate. So those members who participate, if they're taking a chronic medication such as diabetes, heart disease, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, there's eight conditions. If they're on a generic, they get it for free. If they're on a brand medication for diabetes, heart disease, migraines, and respiratory COPD, they get it for 50% off their copay. So there is a financial, it's at the point-of-sale, so it doesn't matter what pharmacy they go to. We give them a little card, it's a secondary insurance card, they put the VIN number in, and it's a point-of-sale, seamless for them to do it. So we're always doing outreach to these 331 individuals to see if we could encourage them to participate in the program. Good news out of that 331, that's roughly around 35, I think, or 40% of the identified that we get. To put that into our book of business comparison, we average around 21% to 23% engagement levels. So your engagement levels are about 10% to 15% higher than what our book of business is. So we have very good success. Angela and her team have done an awesome job of communicating this benefit, encouraging members to participate, and we're seeing those members do that. But we're always reaching out for those that have not responded to us, to see if they would want to. Over to the right here, this is the average engaged member. This is their profile. They take between eight and nine prescription medications a day, one to two over the counter, deal with between six to seven, both chronic and non-chronic conditions. Out of that six to seven, two to three of them are chronic conditions. So again, we know we have the right individuals engaged into the program, and on average, we find about one drug therapy problem per consultation with these individuals, which I'll kind of show you what those things are here in a second. This is the conditions and the prevalence of them. So high blood pressure is the number one. Pain medication's high, but we would expect that in our municipalities, in our manufacturing pain, just because of the work that individuals do within certain sectors of that nature. But as far as our book of business, you align right in line with what we'd expect to see from a condition standpoint. The other thing that I was encouraged about is, as I mentioned, we're always looking for the most complex, high-risk individuals on your plan, and out of that 136 engaged, almost 50% of them have three or more of the chronic conditions. So that's, as you can see, the box below, anybody, on average, individuals with three to four chronic conditions cost a health plan about five times more than somebody with no chronic conditions. So we do have the right people participating in the program, and the results, I think, are showing it. These are just some of the examples of the drug therapy problems that we identified. Adverse drug reactions, this is any unintended occurrence resulting from medication utilization. So the adverse reaction is somebody who's taken it, and their either side effect is not tolerable, or it could be that they don't even know it. And yet, when we do, when we look at the combination of medications, we know that it is, like you'll see, that combination of medications, one medication may cause another one to cause the dosage to be too high or too low. It impacts that when we internalize them all. So we had 15 of the adverse, we had nine compliant, just not taking their medication, either not taking it at all, not taking it properly, or some other issues that were going along with that as well. Eight where we had to have different drug needed, the drug that they currently on was not effective, and we had to talk with the physicians about putting them on another one. Too high, as I mentioned. Doses too low, you can see it's 43. That's a very, very common occurrence, and that was part of the success story. Ozempic .25, it's not effective, so we want to make sure that we're doing that. So we found 126 drug therapy problems with the individuals that we were working with. Any questions on that? So then, what we're also doing, so I mentioned the subset of the individuals with one or more conditions, taking four or more meds. We're also looking at everybody on the plan that's failing the medication. So we're looking for opportunities for individuals that are on high-costing medications, where your formulary has lower-costing clinically-appropriate options available to them. And your whole plan, we only found 10 that are there. So your formulary is very, very good, and the individuals on the medications are on the right medications, and from a cost standpoint to the plan, the most cost-effective. We had zero med safety. This is one that if we had, it would be part of our success story. If we find a med safety alert, that means a combination of medications that you absolutely cannot be on. That is a direct phone call to the prescribing physicians. So we had zero, which is good. Clinical alerts, this is just gaps in care, we had 62 of them. But we also had, outside of the engaged individuals, we had 39 individuals who called the help desk to have a medication-related question. Just could be, do I have a cheaper option? I have a side effect? I have some medication that doesn't look right? Can you answer that? Good news about our help desk, we answer it live, and we have pharmacists available to those individuals when they call in to answer any questions that they may have. The other thing that we have for your members on the diabetes, we have what we call our remote monitoring. For those members that want to get a meter, a diabetic meter that should be tested, they can get it for free. They get the Lantus for free, the Strif for free, and as I mentioned, either their medications for free or a reduced cost. We have 14 members that actively have our meter. The great thing about this meter, it's cellular, so their pharmacist sees their readings in real time. So what that really allows us to do is have a more proactive approach to caring for our patients. We don't have to wait for the individual to realize, maybe I have a problem with my readings, too high, too low, or whatever. As you can see, we had four instances where our pharmacist got these readings, and they proactively reached out to their patient to inquire about the readings because they were of concern. There was something not, the readings just were not proper. So that's good. The average A1C for all of the diabetics that are participating is seven, which is exactly where you wanted to be. That is, goal is seven or lower, and we're right there with it. The average diabetic participating, we've had a 1.5-point reduction in their A1C, which is awesome, and we had six individuals that had greater than a one-point drop. So the technology is extremely helpful, because now the patients are not reliant to figure out if they have a problem. We can clinically look to see if there is and do outreach to them. Same technology with the blood pressure. These are for individuals that are high-risk. We offer these to individuals that are on two or more hypertension medications, hypertension, diabetes, chronic kidney disease, and/or cardiovascular disease. We have 11 individuals that currently have these meters in place. Again, our pharmacists are seeing it in real time. We have more issues with hypertension than we do with diabetes on out-of-range readings. As you can see here, out of the 11 members in the program, our pharmacist had to reach out 10 times to the individuals to inquire about readings that were out of range. So again, the great thing about the technology, it allows us to do what we need to be doing, and that is having better oversight over these individuals and get to them early, rather than waiting for a catastrophic event and then figuring out that we had a problem. Any questions there?
No.
And then we'll go to the investment and the savings portion of it. We had some really good financial results here. Overall, we have a 7.6 to 1 ROI. And I'll break out these buckets here, but the RX savings, these are the hard-dollar savings that we're able to bring back through discontinuations, through medically unnecessary, and I have an accounting of that on the next slide. But validated through the claims, we were able to show that there were $78,893 saved, that the plan's no longer paying for medications that they were paying for previous. Healthcare savings, this is like in that success story, where we're able to identify a problem, work with the physician telephonically, correct that issue without the patient having to go physically into the office, into the primary care, specialist, ER, urgent care, whatever it may be. Compliance savings, these are the softer of the dollars, and you'll see it's pretty big here. But this is why this program was put in place, is to identify your individuals that have these conditions, who are not well-controlled, they're not compliant, they've got issues around the complexity of their conditions. We identify what those issues are, and we get them corrected, and we now have them controlled. And then on the clinical program savings, those are the two I just referred to, on the diabetes monitoring and the hypertension cuff. So the county invested $47,800, and we are showing $314,027. However, if you just want to look at what the hard dollar was, it's just a little under two to one on hard-dollar savings alone in that regard. Any questions for me on this, as we go kind of just in accounting for where we got these savings?
Just briefly. Can we go back one slide?
You bet.
So I think that, you know, we've had a presentation from TRIA in the past, and from what I recollect, our discussions have centered around what is the county's cost for the TRIA Health program? And then we also have had discussions in the past that we have a small group of individuals that will have the highest health expenses, and that affects the county when it comes to when we go out for insurance, or we're looking for what our annualized costs are. There's a smaller group of people that have a lot of health issues. And the benefit from having TRIA Health is you're standing in a spot where you're not a physician, but you're able to see all of the different medication interactions and seeing maybe what one doctor might not be seeing, because they're just looking at their part.
Right.
And so by doing this, when you have the net savings, that might not be reflective of all of the savings to the county if we're able to have individuals that move from those high-health categories maybe to a lower category.
Correct. Correct. So what you will not see in any of these reporting summaries is that you will not see us saying that we prevented a heart attack, or we prevented a stroke, so we saved you $250,000 on a medical claim. What we do state is that what we do know in on our compliance savings, Commissioner Cook, you're exactly right from two points. Number one, the advantage that we have over our physicians is we're getting your claims on a monthly basis. So we're seeing things our physicians are not seeing. They're not aware of it. Physician A doesn't always know what Physician C is doing, but we do. So that's why when we do an outreach to the physicians and alert them to those success stories, or any outreach that we do, it's because we have clinical data in front of us to validate what we're making recommendations for. And I think the thing that really separates us is that 97% of our recommendations to the physicians were accepted. So we're not bringing them fluff. We're not bringing them things that say, hey, you know, Dr. A, what do you think about this? Maybe it may work or may not work. We're coming with absolutes on that. So that's why we have such a high acceptance rate from the physicians, is because we're bringing them things that they're not aware of. It's amazing how many times we'll talk to a physician, and they'll say, Jim never told me that he had gone to see Dr. Smith, and that he is on two new medications. So that, to your point, is that's exactly what our role is, is to identify potential issues and get in front of them before, hopefully, before they become that catastrophic claim for y'all.
Okay. Just kind of maybe refreshing and remembering from our prior discussion.
Right.
So I appreciate that.
Right. Well, thank you. So the other savings is the healthcare savings, you know, just we had urgent care, primary care, specialists. Again, what you will not see on here, if I have a hospitalization visit avoided, that's going to be my success story, because that's an absolute. That is somebody that absolutely was going to have to go to the hospital had we not intervened, and we didn't have any of those. We're very conservative, our pharmacists are conservative in their analysis of the actual impact that they're having, and the majority of them is, they could have gone to their primary, they could, we don't even have one, which I'm surprised, we don't even have one ER visit avoided here. So pretty conservative in that. But again, the key is, the patients have access to talk to their pharmacist. When we identify that, we can do everything telephonically, so we don't have to send them, for the most part. Now, if they have to go to the doctor, if they have to go to the ER, we're going to tell them to go. But if we can intervene without them having to do that, that's great. This is just a breakdown, out of that 136 individuals, we had 25 engaged individuals who's hypertension is not well-controlled when they came into the program, that is now well-controlled. We had 15 with cholesterol, 18 with diabetes, three with asthma, and eight with heart disease. So those are pretty impactful numbers, because those were individuals that nobody had their eyes on until they engaged into the program, and then we were able to identify what the issues are. And the good thing is, for every one of those, as of today, they're well-controlled. When coming in, they were not. So that's the impact that we try to bring, and then the clinical monitoring, we already, we talked about, that's the savings that you're able to achieve through reductions in your A1C, as well as within your mercury levels for your high-blood-pressure side. So that is all I have for you from a clinical and a financial side. Any questions for me or thoughts?
You know, the federal government recently came out with some, I guess, a mandate for the cost of prescription drugs to kind of even the playing field with the rest of the world. We've known for years, we've paid more for prescription drugs than the rest of the world. Where do you see that going?
It'll be interesting. You know, President Trump tried in 2017 and failed. The reality of it is, they have obvious groups within, the pharmaceutical sector is extremely strong, and what we do see is, we were able to negotiate drug prices on the Medicare or Medicaid side, but it's still not to where it needs to be. We're hopeful, but we're not holding our breath. This has been a conversation that they've been having for a very, very long time, and we've seen very little movement in that. And hopeful, but don't know.
I imagine the lobbyists for the big drug companies are working overtime right now.
Well, you know, here's one of the things that's going on. You know, we all heard about the GLP-1 weight-loss medications. They're considered non-essential medications, so the plan doesn't have to carry them and so forth. But there is a big push on the Hill for them to make those essential medications. When they become essential, that means you've got to cover them. And that's just going to, again, from all of our plan sponsors, that's the biggest concern, because unfortunately, any group's population meets the criteria of obesity, which is BMI of 30 and above, and it represents 40% of the group's population. So drug manufacturers are very, very good at doing two things. Number one, keeping the prices the way they are. Number two is redefining what their products do, so that they can continue to charge for the cost of those medications. So it'll be interesting to see how far this goes through the legislators with what President Trump has proposed, but I don't know.
So, well, and I'll get on a soapbox maybe a little bit. There's also the pharmacy benefit managers, which, in my opinion, are sort of the bad actors in the whole industry. And so the manufacturers are advocating for themselves, but there's also the pharmacy benefit managers who are advocating against the manufacturers.
Right.
And then the insurance companies are, I don't know, they just kind of prefer to not pay for anything, it seems like. So I think that, you know, healthcare's a real complicated issue, and I think that one of the things that's great about your program is that you kind of advocate on behalf of our employees, rather than just on behalf of the company, or the county in this case. And so I think a lot of people, I mean, just your average citizen, your employee, does not necessarily know much about medicine.
Right.
And so, maybe outside of what they Google. And so it's good to have somebody paying attention that's not just them. And I know that it's also good for you guys to think about more than just the money aspect, because, you know, we did switch pharmacy benefit managers this year. They are almost exclusively focused on the money aspect of it, and if they feel like it's costing more, then they will intervene as well. And so I think it's great that you guys look at more than that. You look at sort of whether the person is compliant in taking their medications, you look at interactions between medications, and you look at the outcomes that you're getting from it. And I don't know that the other portions of our healthcare plan do that. And so I think it's great that we've got you guys on board to do that. So I appreciate it. I think this is a great presentation today, because we do see that there are financial benefits from it, but it's also, I think, really good to see the outcomes as well. So do you guys, are you exclusively, is TRIA, I guess, exclusively involved with just prescription drugs? Or, you know, if we have employees that are recommended to get surgeries and things like that, do you intervene with that as well?
To answer, no, we don't. Like, we have a weight-loss program, we have a pharmacogenomics DNA testing program that's out there for, to individuals to better align the genetic makeup with medications, but from a surgery. But here's what we do, we have all of the county's best in front of us as far as our pharmacists. So if you have, and I don't know, do you have like a program that if somebody's going to go get a surgery, that you, you don't have anything? Okay. Our pharmacists can talk to them about anything, but we want to make sure we stay in our lane.
Sure.
As far as making recommendations and so forth. But our pharmacists, Commissioner May, you hit on something that I probably haven't stressed enough, is that our pharmacists truly are advocates for their patients. And I've seen them go, and we have, we have examples where they have gone above and beyond, whether it's calling the pharmacy, calling the doctor, calling the drug manufacturer because they can't afford their medication, and they got to be able to do it, and what other options and resources do we have available to us in that regard? So anything our pharmacist can do to help them, even though there's not a weight-loss program in place, you know, our choose-to-loose is not in place, our pharmacists are still, like we talked about with the diabetic person and the weight loss, we're still going to coach them, we're still going to give them resources and tell them what they can do to better manage their lifestyle, to help them. Hey, listen, if you, if we can get you to drop X, Y, five percent of your body weight, we might be able to get you off your Liantus, or we might be able to get you off your Metformin. So here are the benefits of, of doing these lifestyle changes, and we'll have that conversation. It's not strictly medication-related, let's just talk about that. It's a holistic approach that they take from medication to lifestyle to just listening. You know, because again, you have individuals with twenty-seven prescription medications, they've got a story to tell, and that's what I think we do best, is we listen. Yeah. I will say, Commissioner May, you hit on it, but didn't, but the wizard behind the curtain is the PBM, and nobody knows how, nobody knows how that works. I've been doing this a long time, and I haven't found anybody that can tell me exactly how the PBM works. That is, we joke, but that is the wizard behind the curtain, and we don't know what levers are pulling, but they absolutely are the, the key to where the drug prices are.
It's just been the last few years that they've, they've been allowed to advertise pharmaceutical drugs, and of course, I've always wondered, you and I can't buy those things.
Right.
I mean, you have to go to a doctor to get, get those drugs, but yet they're pushing it all the time. Have you noticed a big increase in people picking up prescription drugs maybe they don't need because of the advertising? They, they run to their doctor and say, this is, this is what I need?
Yes. So here is the thing, we have, we have, we have a board of physicians that we, we consult with, and one of the things that the physicians tell, because you, you're hitting on something that we've seen, the county has seen, drug utilization is not going down. You would think with all the science, with all the clinical capabilities that we have, we would be seeing a decrease in the number of individuals being diagnosed with diabetes. Diabetes diagnoses are going up. So when individuals come, physicians will tell us this, when a patient comes into the office and they've got an issue, they expect a prescription when they're walking out of there.
I think so.
And physicians will tell us, we will, if it's not going to hurt them, we'll prescribe it. If it's not going to hurt them, we'll prescribe it, because here's the reality of it, if I don't do it, they're going to go to somebody else to get it. Because we all have that, eighty percent of patients that go into the doctor's office walks out of there with a prescription. And we see this with the utilization, utilization continues, and that's why I'm confident we'll continue to pay for this program in hard-dollar savings alone because of the unfortunate situation with drug utilization continuing to rise. And we're going to continue to see medically unnecessary or duplication of therapies that individuals are on that they don't need to be on, and we're able to at least alert them to that. Now, they have to, they have to contact us, you know, for those that are not engaged, but we're, we're reaching out to let them know, hey, Jim, you're on, you're on a combination of medications that may not be clinically effective, we, give us a call, we'll help you any way that we can to see if there's, if there's an opportunity. You know, so we are, we're, we're doing our best to identify those opportunities and then, now, I will tell you this, if they are, I mentioned this, if they are two medications that we absolutely know that is, that's not good, we'll go directly to the physicians, and then we'll alert the, the patient that we've done that, because that's one that you, we have to make them aware that we've got an issue going on because that could be that next catastrophic issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Great to see everybody again.
Commissioners, I just want to make sure that our employees know how to contact TRIA, and anyone who has our insurance is covered by it can contact TRIA. It's one-eight-eight-eight-seven-nine-nine-eight-seven-four-two is the number that they can call, or they can get online with www.triahelp.com. It is a conversation that you have with the pharmacist pretty quickly, it takes about thirty minutes for your, for your initial call, and it is scheduled, but it is worth the call. You make this call, you do a comprehensive talk about your health, and then you may end up being able to get your prescriptions for free. It is better and easier for us and saves us money if we pay for people to be compliant and know that they have their medications than it is to have a catastrophic event. There will be emails going out reminding people of the TRIA program today.
Okay.
Again, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the program.
Further questions?
No.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next item on our agenda is public comment. I don't have anybody signed up, is there anyone wanting to speak? Okay, how about administrative communications?
Good morning, Commissioners, Candace Stiles, Shawnee County Extension Office, and I'm just coming to let you know that we're having a little bit of a staffing transition in our office with our support staff. Our current main office professionals' last day is this Friday. Our new person is not starting till June tenth, and since that is the first person you see when you walk in the office, our board is asking that we close for lunch, eleven fifteen to twelve fifteen, the month of June. So we're trying to get that word out, no, yeah, eleven fifteen to twelve fifteen, because if people come and they see the sign on the door, and that's the first time they've heard, it might come to you all, hey, the extension office is closed over lunch. It's not permanent, it's just while we get our new people trained. June is also a time of a lot of annual leave use, and with discovery days and different extension events, we are also working out of the office. So, wanted to make you all aware.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other administrative communications today? Commissioner Rippon?
I have nothing to add.
Commissioner Cook?
No, no meeting on Monday?
Yeah, right. Memorial Day. Sorry, had a little bit of a moment there. Yeah, no meeting on Monday. Happy Memorial Day to everybody. Hopefully the weather changes, they're forecasting rain, so that kind of messes up the barbecue plans, but that's all I have. We don't have a need for executive session today, so we are adjourned.